Produced by Rooted in Rights, a program of Disability Rights Washington. Seattle City Council District 6 Transportation and Sustainability Candidate Forum, hosted by the Mass Coalition, Transit Riders Union, Tech for Housing, and the Housing Consortium.
My name is Matthew Lang. I'm your host this evening. And we have a wonderful panel of District 6 candidates. Let's give them a hand. Thank you all for being here this evening. Quickly, I just want to tell you a little bit about the Mass Coalition, what we do and who we are. The Mass Coalition is a coalition of organizations that believe Seattle can have a world-class, multimodal transportation system that moves people efficiently and reliably. We can slash Seattle's carbon emissions and be a model for other cities by taking real action on climate change. We can have a city where people of all ages, intersections, can hop on a bus without getting stuck in gridlock. We can achieve Seattle's stated goal of zero traffic deaths and serious injuries by 2030. We can create an equitable transportation system that treats mobility as a human right. Now, we don't do all these things right now, but we are pushing very hard at the city level and the county level to make things happen. The Coalition includes the Sierra Club, Seattle Neighborhood Greenways, Transit Riders Union, Seattle Subway, The Urbanist, Seattle Transit Blog, 500 Women Scientists, 350 Seattle, Rooted in Rights, and Disability Rights Washington. Thank you to Rooted in Rights for arranging card captioning services this evening, as well as a film of the event. At the check-in table, there were some pieces of paper to write things down. Also, I think they were included on your seats. So if you have those, I'm going to float around really quick after we get started and pick those up from you. But we will have some audience questions toward the end of the event. Yeah, a big thank you to all of our volunteers this evening. And a special thanks to Dave Schultz, Transit Riders Union member, who will be doing our timekeeping this evening. He's going to keep a pretty tight ship this evening so that we can keep things moving. If you'd like to see this evening, please go to transitriders.org/join and join the Transit Riders Union, or visit masscoalition.org and take a look and connect with any of the other organizations that might suit your interests. The Transit Riders Union, we are a dues-based organization. So every member's contribution ensures that we are able to contribute to the work that you are witnessing here tonight. Now, I'm going to hand over the reins to our amazing moderator for the evening, Heidi Ruber of the Seattle Times. Thank you all for being here, and I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming. Before we get started, I want to ask the candidates that each time you speak, please identify yourself. This is helpful for people who are low vision, may not be able to see your name tags here. As mentioned, we have the captioning as well. I will be reading questions that were written by the organizers of this event. And we will start with some questions for which you have one minute to answer, then move to some where you have 30 seconds, then a lightning round where you will use the signs you have in front of you. And then we will move to audience questions. So please write down your questions and look for that volunteer who will be walking around to collect them. And we will be alternating who goes first so that there's not one of you on the hook first each time. So with that, let's start with just a quick, around 10-second or shorter introduction, just who you are and how you got here today. Please, no stump speeches. We will start at the end with Jay.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for coming. Dr. Jay Fawley, lifelong Seattle resident, dad, family physician. Happy to be here tonight and share some thoughts and hear from you.
How did you get here?
That was 10 seconds, right?
How did you get here? Like a bus, a car?
Oh, how did I get here? I took the bus here tonight. I thought you were going to like the life story.
It's transportation for us, so we want to...
I took a metro bus here tonight.
Sergio Garcia, I live in Vittir Ridge. I am a police officer in the district. I am transatlantic from Miami. I absolutely love this place and have an interesting perspective from being stuck in traffic for nine hours a day to homelessness of public safety and as well as a renter and can't afford ever, ever, never to buy a house here. And I walk here because I live above the street.
Hello, my name is Melissa Hall. I'm an attorney. I was a jumper before that. I got here tonight using a car, sugaring car, because after this, we have ballots of public which I and other candidates are going to carpool to.
Hi, I'm Kate Martin, and I walked it from my home.
Hi, I'm Joey Massa. I'm running as an independent progressive, and my wife dropped me off, and then I'm going to be carpooling with another candidate.
Good evening. I'm John Peoples. I live in Great Lake, and I drove here from Seventh and Stewart to just outside here in 16 minutes.
Good evening. My name is Terry Rice. I live in Ballard. I'm a small business leader, and I carpooled here this evening.
Hi, my name is Dan Strauss. I was born and raised in Ballard. I love this district immensely. I had the opportunity to carpool this evening.
Hello, I'm Heidi Wills, and I live in Fremont. I'm running because I care very much about climate protection. And I was the second person in the state of Washington to get a hybrid vehicle. And I drove my hybrid vehicle tonight because I have to go to a house party in the afternoon.
Hello, my name is Ed Parker. I'm a planner with Seattle Public Safety Association, and I'd like to go over here and apply a little bit of advice, but I'm coming off right now.
Okay, we can start from this end, since you already have the mic. These are one-minute answers, and please again identify yourself before you answer. The first question, how can we make Seattle's streets, including sidewalks and intersections, safer and more accessible for everyone, including people with disabilities? Specifically, do you support installing automated traffic enforcement cameras, implementing speed limit reductions, and banning rights on red? You were first.
Ed Parker, here. I fully deploy automated camera enforcement and banning right turns on red. I think pedestrian safety is really critical. Here in the city of Seattle, we have a picture of your own. Go on, eliminating traffic, pedestrian fatalities, and severe injury by 2030. And we still have a long way to go. I think one thing I would push for here, building out a connected network of protected bike lanes throughout the city, and also fully embracing the concept of complete streets. We're in sidewalks with curb ramps so that people with disabilities can navigate much more easily around the city.
Yes to everything. And we also need more crosswalks to improve safety. We also need more marked sidewalks to improve safety. We need infrastructure improvements in our city. One-fourth of our city still does not have sidewalks, just basic safety measures for pedestrians. I've been on the city council before. I was there in the year 2000 to 2003, and I was an advocate for transportation infrastructure improvements, giving the nickname Sidewalk Wills. And I would be an advocate again if I get the opportunity.
Please remember to identify yourself before you speak. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dan Strauss, and I absolutely believe in lowering speed limits, especially in residential areas. I was hit by a driver while I was riding a bike in Ballard, and I spent four days in Harborview Hospital. The outcomes could have been very different after that day had the car been larger or made of metal. And one of the reasons I was hurt so badly was because of how fast it was moving. I worked on trying to create not allowing for blocking the BOS automated enforcement since 2014. Absolutely support banning right on red because that's how big cities operate. I would take it a step farther and say that we should be able to allow all pedestrian crossing for all crossings, like all directions. And absolutely in favor of protected bike lanes, connected network of protected bike lanes, and a connected network of transit only lanes. We absolutely need a complete streets in our city.
My name is Terry Rice. I do support lowering the speed limits in the city, especially in those residential zones. Automated traffic cameras to keep cars from blocking the intersections and camera enforcement for that, and as well as banning those right-hand turns. But this goes into also how do we go beyond that to build a really safe infrastructure? So that means focusing in on the Bike Master Plan and getting that through to completion in its original form. And it means final mile investments. So things like crosswalks that light up and have flags, sidewalks that have curb cuts and that are wide enough, and an infrastructure of bike lanes that allows for riders to move between the most important parts of the city and between the residential parts of the city. So that interconnected bike infrastructure, as well as the future infrastructure for transit, whether it's electric scooters or other sorts of forms of transit that we don't know about yet or that are coming soon. So that's how we build that inclusive, accessible, and safe transportation.
I'm John Peoples, and I am a big fan of sidewalks, the curb ramps. I'm all for adding more ramps. That is not my phone. And I'm a big fan of repaint the lines. I absolutely disagree with the use of camera enforcement. If you want enforcement, hire more police officers. Let the human beings do it. Schools only for the camera enforcement. The speed limit, we just reduced the speed limit to 20 miles an hour in residential areas. I don't see the reason to reduce it more. Not only do I do not agree with banning a right turn on red, but I'm a fan of left turn on red if it's one-way to one-way, curb to curb. There is room for all of us, buses, bikes, cars, trucks. We share the road with pedestrians, and I like the all-way walk as well. We need to share the road. There's enough room for all of us, and we can move everyone through town safely without restricting one user in favor of other users. And that's it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joey Massa. I absolutely support these automated camera systems. In fact, I was caught by one not too long ago, and I'll tell you, I learned my lesson. The data bears out that these systems show great impact on helping folks to realize the existing laws we have. I think the policy of giving folks warnings for the first six months in efforts like this, one of our consistent issues as a city has been broader education, letting folks know about the semi-drastic changes that we're making. Further, as far as sidewalk accessibility, I think there's great work to be done as far as enabling disabled individuals to travel down sidewalks. My wife and I are both rather able-bodied, but I'll tell you what, every night I carry a flashlight with me because there are so many cracks in so many of our existing sidewalks. We have so much work to do in our infrastructure. I think we should be looking at jobs programs, to be working on these issues, to be expanding our bike network path-to-path, leaning away from things like shareos and half-minded compromises, and leaning fully into more effective solutions.
I'm Kate Martin. I'd like to respond to this question in a couple of ways. I served on the Pedestrian Master Plan Advisory Group. I also served on a couple of other transportation committees along the years. I've been involved for about 20 years. The speed limit reduction is a no-brainer. The kind of injuries that people sustain when they're in an accident when there's low traffic speeds is completely different. And we've had some incredibly awful pedestrian car accidents historically in this district. So I really support that. I've often been thinking around Green Lake, it would be really great to have a reduced speed limit. Enforcement sounds really good. I'd love to see crosswalk enforcement. I'd love to see cops out there actually ticketing people for not yielding the right of way to the crosswalk.
Yeah.
I'd like to finish the sidewalk network, the greenway network, and the natural drainage network. It's super upsetting up on 90th and Hill with the greenway from Crown Hill to the new schools off of Aurora that there's no sidewalks, and there's no signs telling the kids to walk facing the traffic. So those are all improvements we could make.
My name is Melissa Hall. Reduce speed limits, yes. Better sidewalks, yes. They're in fairly poor condition in a lot of the city that has them. I'm in favor of ending turn right on red because we are in urban city. Traffic camera enforcement, absolutely. If we can get authorization. It doesn't look like we are going to get authorization, so I would like to experiment with moving the stoplights to the other side of the street so that you can't see them if you're in the crosswalk, which is a behavioral change that has been shown to be effective in preventing blocking the BOS. It doesn't require additional authorization or the legislature. I'm sorry. And yes to a protective cycling. I would very much like to see our street safety program focus on pedestrians because I am a pedestrian, but also because a walkable city and a livable city.
Sergio Garcia, in almost 15 years of police work, I've seen people get hit by parked cars. So I've seen a ton of things out there. I am all for finishing sidewalks and improving the infrastructure of them. No to red light cameras because we don't know where the money goes. The money does not go back to the city, and it takes away the ability to give breaks for people who have a legitimate reason as to why they run the red light. Causes also people to stop in the middle of the street. It causes accidents. If anything, it does not cause the traffic flow, a normal traffic flow. Yes to lowering the speed limit wherever there is studies that show they need to be lowered, and there is a process for that. Bike shares of blocking sidewalks is also a big thing. We're going to, we want more scooters and more bike shares, but they're blocking the sidewalk, and for somebody that has limited mobility, it is a problem. I have had to get out of my police car and move 37,000 line bikes out of the intersection.
This is Jay Fawley. I have a quick personal story regarding two of the three tenants that we're talking about. This was probably about 10 years ago. I lived in the neighborhood for 21 years, and my wife and I have two sons who are now 16 and 14. They were in the car with me, and anyway, jumping ahead, I got a ticket in the mail. It said, "I got a ticket for running a red light, taking a right turn at Market End 15." And I said, "No, I didn't. I wasn't even there that day. I don't remember that." So click right here on this video. Like, you sat down with my kids. They were about five and seven, and there was a picture of me with them on the car running through it. But in all seriousness, absolutely, I support all three of those things. We can achieve Vision Zero, no question. All of these injuries and deaths essentially are preventable. I support all three of those things. As a family physician and as a public health doctor, I have taken care of so many people that have been injured, some severely. And we can definitely drop that and get to Vision Zero by adopting policies like these three things.
Okay, Jay, first for the next question. What does racial equity mean to you? And how does it affect your approach to land use, transportation planning, and public outreach?
What does racial equity mean to me? How does it... Could you say that one more time? How does it...
How does it affect your approach to land use, transportation planning, and public outreach?
Okay, that is a very challenging question. I answered in 60 seconds. Everybody has inherent bias. Everyone experiences. We have institutional racism that is built in. We all have implicit bias. We have to take active measures to address those biases. And those things need to be integrated into our policies regarding transportation, housing, and everything we do as a city from a municipal government standpoint. The city has a racial equity toolkit, and many other organizations have such a thing. These are things that need to continue to be pushed. I think Seattle is a national leader in many ways in this area, but the work is far from done, and we need to continue on all the path that we're on.
This is Sergio Garcia, and this is a big one for me. I think that we are doing a good job as of now. I think that there is definitely room for more improvement. My story with that is I am trying to have my mother and father move out here. My mother grew up in an environment that she went into sixth grade, and she needed to start cleaning houses at that age. She never had the luxury to ride a bicycle, right? Now she has two bad knees, slightly overweight, doesn't speak English. And my pitch to her is move to Seattle so you can ride a bicycle uphill down here in the rain and the cold and put all your equipment in the back. It doesn't make sense. So although I am advocating for alternative means of transportation, I think education is huge. Same thing for housing. You know, we need to have these people sit at the table and actually see what it is that they need. We need the people that we're trying to target at the table to have these conversations and not just anybody make the decisions for them.
I'm Melissa Hall. When it comes to racial equity, my mantra in this is plan with, not for. I can't pretend that I can see past my biases and experiences. I can only know that my bias and experiences exist, and I need people with other perspectives at the table. We will never get past the history of redlining if we don't deeply acknowledge it. So planning is the area where I think our history of racism most needs to be confronted in a systemic way. That looks like having people at the table, but it also looks like community support. And that looks like going to the community and saying, "Hey, what do you need from us in order to be stronger?" As far as transportation, we know that there's a modal split, and what side of the modal split you're on depends on... Well, cars get more money. We know this. That's a thing that we can change at the local level. It's not written in stone.
Kate Martin speaking right now. I had an interesting opportunity to get a window into equity. I was married for 25 years to a Mexican immigrant, and for a white girl that was raised in a white neighborhood, it really gave me some perspective on what really goes on, including when my son was in high school at Roosevelt, and they just assumed that he wasn't going to college because he had a Mexican last name. It was fascinating. From the land use perspective, I'm really tired of us cramming all of the lower-income families onto arterial streets. I think that's a complete injustice. I'd like to maintain 35% lock coverage so we have enough room for the trees and the water to get back into the ground and all the other great things that happen about carbon reduction by having less land coverage. I'd like to get more people renting from owner occupants in those neighborhoods. I live in a house of eight people that I share with seven others, and I would like to encourage everyone to do that kind of thing, to tuck a few more people into their house. I really believe in ownership, so I'd like to get more ownership across all income brackets.
Hi, Joey Massa again. One part of my history that's very important to me is I grew up on the Gulf Coast in Baton Rouge and Lafayette, Louisiana. And one of the things you see there is the impact of disparity and focusing on certain sects of population and how damaging that can be culturally. Further, here in Seattle, we aren't far removed from those histories and those injustices throughout our time. So focusing on not the loudest voices, not the most populous voices, but rather on voices equally is vital. In my campaign, I've made sure to surround myself with diverse voices, with advisors across different class and population brackets, and really emphasizing repaying our dues to those societies, I think, is vital. Thank you.
I'm John Peoples, and every single person is an individual, and the rules apply to everyone. Two wrongs do not make a right. When it comes to planning, I like the plan with, not for. Invite everyone. Everyone has a choice to show up or not. Love your neighbor as yourself. Treat others like you'd like to be treated, and make a household budget.
All right. Racial equity to me means understanding the historic inequities as well as the institutional bias that exists in our policies and in our budgets and in how we have historically allocated resources. So that, in Seattle, looks a lot like the exclusionary zoning practices that have been in place for a very long time. We know that often as redlining. And the result of that, the long-term result of that, has been that multifamily units and affordable units are infrequently available in neighborhoods that tend to be more white or more affluent, and that they're tucked into certain neighborhoods. And today, a lot of that affordable housing, or what we understand to be affordable housing, is built in a very small number of neighborhoods. But it goes much beyond just the housing and land use. This idea of where we need to be talking about racial equity and using the tools available, like the King County Toolkit, should infiltrate every part of government and every policy.
Hi, this is Dan Strauss. Systemic racism is a part of our society, and it needs to be addressed. I understand that if information is presented to me in a way that it makes sense to me, it doesn't mean that it's smart. It just means that it's presented to me in a way that I understand it. And for me, I understand that implicit bias is also throughout our community. I've had the opportunity at the City of Seattle to work on racial equity toolkits. I understand that if the 17 bus route on Sunset Hill needs more service, that also means that the number seven bus route needs more service. I look to work with my community partners and learn from them and to take direction in areas that I don't have the answer to. And it's really important to me that as we develop our city, we do it in a way that is equitable for all of us in Seattle.
Thanks. I'm Heidi Wills. I had an opportunity to meet someone just two days ago who experienced redlining when she moved to our area from Mississippi. And that's Dr. Maxine Hayes. And you may have heard of her. She was our Secretary of Health for the state of Washington. But she couldn't get a home near Children's Hospital when she moved here to be a doctor in our region. The history of segregation and racial injustice is deep in our community, and we do need to acknowledge that. I had the opportunity to work for 13 years in South Seattle and work with children in communities that are underserved and see firsthand how there are fewer opportunities for children of color in our community than there are for kids who aren't. And I think that organizations like the one I had an opportunity to run called The First Tea that uses life skills and mentorship to help young people can help build successful futures.
Ed Parker, I think that Terry gave a very good explanation of racial equity and systemic racism. And for me, it is deeply embedded when it comes to land use and housing issues as well as transportation. Take land use and housing. In the city of Seattle, we have single-family zoning that covered around two-thirds of the city. And that did not come about overnight. It was built up over a long, several decades, and it had had the impact of dampening the amount of affordable housing stock available in Seattle, like in many other communities throughout the country. People of color and people with disabilities have lower incomes and are less able to afford single-family homes. And so I think we need to look at the single-family housing policies in the city.
Okay, Heidi, you're first on this question. This is a scenario. In your district, SDOT has proposed to redesign a street to make it safer and predicts that the changes will result in fewer deaths and serious injuries. However, this redesign will slow down vehicle traffic by 30 seconds each way and lead to a loss of 50 parking spaces. As a result, the community is split about whether this project is good for your neighborhood. How would you manage this controversial project?
Yeah, you get to be last. You get to think about it longer. Are you sure this is hypothetical? I think that the goals, right? If we keep coming back to the goals, right? I mean, we really need to have conversations as a community on how we're going to be safer and lower our carbon footprint. And if those are our goals, right? We want to be carbon neutral by the year 2050. That's the goal established by the City of Seattle. And to get there, we're going to have to make hard choices. And I think we need to continue to have that conversation as a community as a whole, right? Because there's going to be trade-offs to get there, and we might lose some car stores... Because there's going to be trade-offs to get there and we might lose some car storage along our streets, but what we gain is so much more.
This is Dan Strauss. And this is a situation that sounds very familiar to one that I've worked on recently. And what I would say is that we need to be able to meet our residents where they are and when they have trouble understanding the fact that increased bicycle infrastructure will allow more people to access their stores, when we have protected bike lanes and when we have bicycle infrastructure, it increases the amount of people that are actually able to access the space. And with car storage on public space, it oftentimes decreases the ability for people to access. Even though it's been the way we've always done it, doesn't mean it's a way of the future. And we need to be able to work to build a progressive and equitable future for all of us here in Seattle.
Just a reminder, the question was, how would you manage this controversial project? So hoping to hear about how you would manage controversy around the project.
Terry Race. I would want to hear from the community that's affected by it. I'd want to spend time in that community and understand what their fears are about the project, what their concerns are about the project, and what their aspirations are for their neighborhood and for that area. And then we do have to make hard decisions. We have a serious problem in our city with pedestrian and with biker safety and with a lack of infrastructure to support better safety. And we're in the middle of a climate crisis, so we have to make different decisions about how we use our road space and how we use our land space if we're going to make meaningful and substantial progress. But that doesn't mean that we want to leave folks out in the dust. I'm a small business leader and there are real concerns for small businesses in Seattle that are already facing pressures from rising costs of rent, rising costs of labor. So what can we do as a city to help the small businesses that fear that that absence of street parking or car storage is going to have a negative impact on their business? What can we do to help support them as we make the hard decisions we need to make in order to really move our city forward?
I'm John Peoples and as far as managing the controversy goes, definitely want to listen to all of the stakeholders, the pedestrians, the bike riders, the automobile drivers and those who need to find parking when they drive various places. So listen to the stakeholders and sit down with everyone, even those who are opposed to each other. Get them all at a table, two, three people, and explain their various fears and concerns to each other and look for ways to find common ground. And then when it does come to making those hard choices, people can be kept safe without slowing down traffic and removing parking. Things like eye contact and waving people through and being good neighbors and knowing that everyone has a place on our streets and it doesn't have to be one or the other. It can be both.
Hi, Joey Massa again. One of the many reasons I decided to get into politics and specifically into this position is the lack of communication between our elected leaders and our residents. I got my start in this city as a bouncer and one of the most vital skills for a bouncer is clear and effective communication, active listening, and being able to redirect frustrations into productive means. And so a lot of the times, that means explaining why, even though this might not seem convenient for you right now, it's convenient for all of us in the long term. It's going to be helpful for you in the future and that the choices we make right now are going to lead us to a better tomorrow, whether that means a hangover or, you know, not bumping someone who you didn't see crossing a crosswalk. Thank you.
This is Kate Martin speaking. I'm a planner by profession and so I'm really interested in great planning processes and basically creating win-wins. I feel like we've made a lot of mistakes with incredibly top-down kind of situations. We don't want to do what happened on 35th. We don't want to do what happened on Roosevelt. We don't want to do what happened on 65th with super top-down decisions. When I first got involved in neighborhood planning back in the end of the 90s, we had a bottom-up planning process where the neighborhood solved the problem that they were asked to solve. We did a great job doing that. I would suggest that we go back to doing bottom-up neighborhood plans where we're not punishing businesses, we're not punishing people, older people, people with children, and we're creating win-wins for everybody.
This is Melissa Hall. In this situation, the City Council doesn't have a lot of authority and there's a limited ability to manage the controversy. The problem is that we keep having this conversation over and over again. Instead of constantly fighting individual little battles over specific street redesigns, I think that the answer is to be more comprehensive. We did this when we did transit redesign. We can come up with objective standards for street redesign every time we resurface streets and apply them objectively and in a way that makes sense throughout the entire city. The fact of the matter is, as much as we care about what people think in their backyards, you're going to make biased decisions in your backyard because that's going to affect you in a different way than it affects the rest of the city. We need to sit down, have that real hard conversation about what's best for the city, and come up with level of service standards for all of the roadway and not just the part that cars go on.
Sergio Garcia. And sorry, I was writing, I was looking, I was doing the math on my phone here, but the question is, how do we manage the controversy? I have almost 30,000 hours of managing controversy now. When people call me, I never show up and it's never people like, hey, you know, we kind of agree and we called you just to tell you that we agree. It's always controversy and I have to make that decision. I cannot leave that location until we resolve either short-term, long-term, or come up with great ideas. And this is controversy that comes from my neighbor's tree is covering my yard or, you know, marriage issues or other personal things. So it's a skill set that I've been able to develop and I intend to utilize it if I get that opportunity.
This is Jay Fathie. How to manage the controversy? First of all, it's very important to define what problem are we trying to solve? And everyone needs to be on the same page for that. I would use the skills that I've used as a physician for over 25 years, which is, number one, to listen. You want your physicians to listen to you and make sure you are heard and they are considering things. And number two, you want them to implement a plan that is evidence-based, that's going to follow data, and you're going to track it and follow it. I would also manage it by utilizing the skills that I've employed in every job that I've ever had, which is bringing groups together to solve difficult problems, whether that is recreating a brand-new health plan for thousands of unionized nurses and healthcare workers at Swedish for the benefit of their health and their families, or working with two huge government agencies in Olympia to put 25,000 foster kids on a streamlined, unified health plan across Washington State. I've had success doing those things and I trust that that sort of, those sort of skills would serve me well at managing this controversy.
I think that the City Council members have a responsibility not only to represent people, but also to help people understand city policies and goals. So in the case of this controversy, I would talk with people and share with them that we're trying, we're reducing, we want to help increase pedestrian safety by lowering speed limits. We want to eliminate pedestrian fatalities and serious injuries and keep our families, elders, and children safe. With regard to parking, I would want to help people understand that we are trying to become a more carbon-friendly city. We're trying to provide more transit options for people, more mobility options, including bicycling and scootering. And change can be hard, but one thing we have to keep in mind is that, in my view especially, arterial are primarily for mobility. I think that parking should be a much lower priority, especially for arterial streets. And I think we can help people understand that. They will come around.
Okay. All right, Dan, you're going to be a first for this. The United Nations Climate Report tells us we have about 11 years to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by more than 50%. Given that more than 50% of Seattle's greenhouse gas emissions come from transportation, what are the highest priority actions to put Seattle on the path to decarbonization?
Absolutely. So again, this is Dan Strauss. It's creating transit-only lanes so that we are able to use our transit that we have that allows you to go to your bus stop, catch a bus within 10 minutes, get where you're going without getting stuck in traffic. The reason that I've heard that a lot of people who desire to use buses don't is because the frequency of the bus and/or because express buses stop running after a certain period of time, that there's not as much service as they desire. We can use the Seattle Transportation Benefit District funding in more expansive ways. We can work with King County Metro to expand the amount of coaches that we have and the amount of drivers that we have. And when we have reliable and frequent service, it will allow people to be able to rely on the bus. I currently, if I don't catch my bus, I take a bus every day, if I don't catch my bus by 6:15, my 20-minute ride becomes over an hour.
I think it begins with more A-B-C lanes or anything but car lanes, so lanes for buses, lanes for bicycles. And also, we have to look at ensuring that there's adequate coverage from metro transit for all parts of the city so that all neighborhoods are well-served and have options when it comes to metro transit. We want to look at things like frequency to make sure that the bus is running often enough. ST3 can be expedited by doing things like waving permits and helping to expedite the permits to get that built. And then finally, looking into the final mile of metro transit to ensure that sidewalks are well-maintained, that crosswalks feel safe and they light up so people feel comfortable crossing the street to get to their metro station, ensuring real-time tracking of buses through an app, giving people greater ways to pay. We want to reduce the friction, reduce the pain points in becoming a metro rider so that it becomes the easy option, so that people want to choose that over their car and that they know that it'll be fast, it'll be safe, and it'll be reliable.
We should definitely increase the number of buses on the streets. That will encourage those who want to ride the buses to ride the buses rather than drive everywhere. With more buses on the streets, more routes along the arterials, more people will be on the buses and fewer cars will be on the street. That way, it's done naturally, organically, and we don't demonize people who aren't doing things the way we do them. And so, in addition, the buses need to be engineered in a way that they're not belching out dirty particles because buses aren't squeaky-clean either. Nowhere in my vision of Seattle is there an A-B-C lane. Curb-to-curb, there's room for us all. And lastly, so many of those Al Gore, United Nations predictions over the last 34 years have been wrong.
Emphasizing shared transit options, whether that means effective private solutions such as shared bicycles, scooters if they're viable, Reach Now and Lime Cars, those types of things, helping folks to make the choice to move away from individual car ownership and lean into shared vehicle and shared transit options. One of my campaign planks that I'm most excited about is expanding our passenger ferry system, creating terminals in North Seattle and even on Lake Washington and Lake Union, expanding our options for getting folks off of the road, period, in general, and onto better shared transit opportunities. And really creating trust in our transit systems that as individuals, we can move away from personal car ownership. The other week, I was trying to get down to South Lake Union and there was no effective way other than a two-hour ride in a bus for me to get down there. And so I drove my car and then while I was down there, three rail cars passed me with no one on them. So, you know, choices like that make it frustrating.
This is Kate Martin speaking. I'd like to quote Jarrett Walker. I don't know if you read his blog called Human Transit, but it's super fantastic and he always says that transit needs to be a choice that a person in the free world would make. And we have some improvements to the system that we have to make that true. However, we are making quite a bit of progress. The things that I could suggest for our neighborhood would be, when we do that light rail tunnel, let's just run it all the way up to Crown Hill. That would really help. Let's consider what I call a beach bus that hits all the parks, Golden Gardens, Green Lake, Warren Magnussen Park, and just circulates us on some micro-transit. I think that would really help. As I mentioned, definitely finish the sidewalk and greenways network. That would get a lot more people out. I just think that we're, of course, we're going to have more electric vehicles and more self-driving cars or however that's going to unfold. But when I went to the Climate Summit and they featured Portland last weekend, the things that they're doing, they've so, come so far in achieving their goals that 171 action steps that they're taking, I think we can emulate some of what they're doing down in Portland. Thank you.
I think the most effective way to get people out of cars is to change our urban form. It's something we're going to have to do anyway because we don't have enough space for the people who live in Seattle. Transit users, walkers, people who use non-car-based transportation live in dense, compact spaces. They live in small towns and big cities. And this is what we have to create if we want people to change the way that they get around. We need to change the places that they need to go. Slow densification, we can't do it without the resources and support networks. We'll encourage people to walk around in their neighborhoods more and use transit to get between neighborhoods because it's not a huge lift to get from one neighborhood to another. Looking to urban form as a way to revise the way that we get around is ultimately the way that we're going to solve car dependency and the climate problem.
This is Sergio Garcia. And I think that we're all going to agree, we've been to a couple of forums already here, and everybody's going to agree that the answer here is in public transportation. So I'm not going to go over that. I think what we need to do here is start thinking outside the box and start addressing some of the people that cannot choose the alternative means of transportation. My mother that can't ride the bicycle, or me who can't respond to your calls for service on the metro bus as much as I would love to, it just wouldn't work out. So there's a couple of things that we could get creative here with, alternative work schedules for city employees. I work five days a week, but if I were to work four days, 10-hour shifts, I made a little math here, that would take away one day a week. That's 11,700 hours of, you know, giving out fumes of my vehicle. That is 655,000 hours a year. That is equivalent to 728,000 pounds of carbon a year, just me alone. And if you make that with all the city departments, those are just ways to think outside of the box here. We could also hire crossing guards to assist us, maybe.
Hey, it's Jay Fathie. Let's just be perfectly clear that climate change is a very real existential threat to the human race and planet Earth. Our cities have been designed around cars for the last century and that absolutely needs to change. This is a fundamentally critically important time moving forward here. We have to get people out of their cars. A lot of the things have already been discussed. In Seattle, we have geographic limitations. We have to expedite light rail. We have to get more buses. We have to try to get more bus-only lanes. We have to look at these alternative things such as scooters. And we can't do this without addressing density because we need to have more walkability and we need to have more sorts of urban villages where people don't need to get around as much. And I think we're on a good track.
And me, that means several things. It means having greater density in our urban villages and centers throughout the city, close to frequent transit service. It means improving our transit service throughout the city. We'd be having micro-transit connecting the urban villages. Light rail is not going to be enough to meet our transit solution, but I would look at ways to accelerate the construction of light rail. Right now, the construction schedule is dependent on the flow of revenue. If we can speed that flow of revenue up perhaps by congestion pricing, that might be a way to get the light rail system in place sooner than later. And I think that converting to a electric vehicle is an important component as well.
We need bold action. When I was on the City Council 20 years ago, I had the opportunity to help lead the way for Seattle City Light to become carbon neutral by divesting in coal power, investing in wind power, and creating the Green Power Program for solar projects. I helped lead the rewrite of the Commercial Energy Code to be one of the strongest in the And if so, what specific tax policies would you advocate for at the city level?
We do need new tax policy, for sure, and that starts by continuing to take the fight to Olympia, to move away from a primarily sales-based, a property-tax-based revenue system, and to an income tax, to—we can have a more equitable approach to this. However, in the interim, we do have some really serious challenges—from housing affordability to our response to homelessness and the infrastructure that we've been talking about, that we need to build today. And that's going to take money. It's not clear at this point how much revenue we're going to need to raise, but one area that I do want to raise additional revenue is by beginning to tax vacant rental units for large landowners. So this is not a tax that would apply to someone who owns five units, or 10 units, or 15 units, but if you own more than 50 units in the city of Seattle, and you have units that are sitting vacant for more than 90 days, we're going to begin to tax those vacant rental units, and we're going to use that revenue to invest it back into the city of Seattle around transportation projects and affordability projects.
We most certainly do not have a revenue problem. We're just spending too much of what we do take in. We have plenty of revenue. And we can—we do have a balanced budget, thank you very much, but what we need is a rainy-day fund to prepare for an unforeseen disaster in the future. And as far as personal accountability goes, there is plenty that each individual can do to reduce his expenses—roommates, and reducing personal expenses, seeking higher-paying work, seeking lower-cost housing. All these individuals can do to mitigate what some see as this—what I consider to be a perfectly fair taxing system, except that they keep adding more to it.
Hi, Joey Massa again. Not to get back on this horse, but there are multiple reasons why I jumped into this race. One of those is, a few years ago, I was working as a project management—or, sorry, project manager—in construction. The three cardinal rules of project management are timeline, scope, and budget. That highlighted my interest in our city's inability to make any three of those categories in almost every project that we ran. So do we need more revenue? To be honest, I'm not sure yet. I believe we need an audit of our city's internal services to make sure that we're spending our budget effectively and not wasting money in those means. Further, as a progressive, I stand against further regressive taxes and fees, such as the soda-sweetened beverage fee, which affects lower-income populations more than higher-income populations, road fees that are not revenue-neutral, and other means along those ends.
Yeah, it's really a question, do we need more money? I mean, the city budget has gone up in just the last few years from $4 billion to $6 billion. Boston is a city of our size, and they operate on, I think, $1.5 billion less than we do. They have twice as many cops as we have, and I can tell you that it was safe to walk the streets when I was there, and there was no disorder going on. I think that in our tax system, most of our taxes are going to the education system, which I consider a completely fossilized organism that needs reform. Only 50% of the kids are learning to read, write, or do math in that system, and we really need to be loading—front-loading the investment in a kid's first thousand days and not be worrying quite as much about whether we're paying for their community college. I think that would make a huge difference. I do realize it's a regressive tax system. If the lead-up is to say, "Do I support an income tax?" I don't. But I really support us going in and—to your point—just really auditing what we're doing and making sure that we're not so wasteful.
This is Melissa Hall. I think taxes are a way of returning luck's share back to the community, because luck isn't evenly distributed, and money isn't evenly distributed, and we do our best to fight against those sorts of things. Unfortunately, our ability to respond to the regressive tax system is very limited right now. That's mostly out of the City Council's hands. And in terms of what we can do, well, personally, I hope that the high earners' tax has a really good day in court this summer, but that's wishful thinking. Realistically, in order to meet the challenges that we have ahead of us, we need more income. And there's only one tax that I can find that the city of Seattle has ever collected that it's not currently collecting, and that's a head tax or a payroll tax. So unfortunately, that's where we have to look right now, because we don't have a ton of options. I do hope that we get a more inclusive, less regressive tax system, and I would definitely support that. Thank you.
This is Sergio Garcia, and do I think that we have a regressive tax system? Yeah, it's pretty bad. That being said, I agree with Kate and Melissa here. It's kind of out of our hands right now. I also think that we need to comb through the money that we're currently spending. I think that we've lost—as residents—we've lost complete trust in how responsible local government is being with our money. I know that the more money we get throughout the years, if it is not evaluated, audited, a lot of this money just sits around, and we don't know what happens with it. I could give you an example, just within my department. We don't buy our police cars. Police cars are worth normally $25,000, $35,000. We have the Fleet Department—Fleet and Services Department—which purchases those cars and turns around and leases them to the police department four times the rate. So we end up paying $100,000 per police car. That's money right there that we could utilize for affordable housing. They do the same thing with our police radios.
Hey, it's Jay Fadde. We are a state that is very proud of being blue, and we are a city that's very proud of being very, very blue. The fact that we have the most regressive tax system in the country is unconscionable. It is absolutely infuriating. We need to do everything we can to move away from that. I personally believe that those that have more should pay more, whether it's an individual or it's a corporation or a business. I believe in a state income tax. I support capital gains tax. I support working families' tax credit from the state level. So we need to continue to work with our state partners, who are pushing hard for those types of reforms to occur. From the city's standpoint, yes, there needs to be accountability. The government budget of the city seems to be growing and growing and growing, and I eagerly anticipate, serving you on the council, to look at the numbers and crack the books open and strive for some more increased accountability. That said, on the homelessness issue alone, Seattle spends two to three times less than other cities our size. We are going to need to spend more money to address that crisis.
To build more affordable housing, I think it would be worthwhile to go back and look at the employee-hour tax that we proposed last year. I know it did not have a good outcome. However, I think that it could have been fashioned in a way to make it more acceptable to businesses. I think we could have done a better job of bringing businesses to the table and maybe having the tax be on gross profits rather than gross revenue, and also making the tax a little bit—making it more progressive. As proposed originally, it only had two tiers, so it was somewhat regressive in some ways. And I think we could have had an improved version that could have passed muster and provided a great infusion of affordable housing to the city. Another funding source for addressing homelessness—I would love to see the state government provide annual funding to locally-based community groups that work on homelessness issues, like the Lake City Tax Force on homelessness. Yes, we need a more progressive tax structure from the state with a capital gains tax and income tax. We also need to restructure the real estate excise tax. That's right now a flat fee. Why don't we graduate that for more expensive homes contributing more? But there are things we can do at the local level until we get those changes from the state. Why not impose a $1 fee on Uber and Lyft rides into downtown and dedicate those dollars to affordable housing? There's precedent for that in New York City. If we could move forward with congestion pricing, we could do that on a sliding scale, so we remember equity. For bold action, let's lid I-5 and create more affordable housing and knit those communities in a very dense area to provide more housing. The reason it's so important is 46% of renters in our city are severely constrained. They're spending over 50% of their income on housing.
This is Dan Strauss. I absolutely agree with the idea of lidding I-5. I've had the opportunity to work on this project, and we've seen other cities like the District of Columbia be able to use space above freeways, then mix-use it, so that you're able to create the revenue that you need to have to build the housing. We're absolutely going to need a lot of money to build the housing that we've underperformed with, and we need to have our regional partners—regional partners in Snohomish County, Pierce County, King County. And I've got relationships in these places. I've got relationships at the state to be able to work on passing an income tax. And what we can do—to what the City Council can do today about the regressivity in our city—is indexing our fines and fees to the value—for instance, a parking ticket. If a Mercedes gets a parking ticket, it should be paying more than a 1986 Honda. This is something that we can do today to benefit our Seattleites.
We are shifting now to 30-second answers. Candidates, please remember to identify yourselves. Audience members, please remember, if you have a question, write it down. Someone will come around and get that. We'll be getting to those soon. Starting with John. The Move Seattle levy initially promised improvements for seven new rapid-ride bus lines for the routes. Now, the full improvements are expected on three or four routes. What will you do to deliver the rapid-ride expansions promised in the Move Seattle levy?
This is John Peoples, and a promise was made. That promise needs to be kept by the city government. What that means is, as your City Council representative, I will be seeking to audit all city departments, looking for money that we can use to make up the difference and fill out the rapid-ride system that was promised.
Hi, Joey Massa again. As I've said before, effective solutions require costly—sorry, effective solutions require costly solutions. The thing with that, often, they're not just fiscally costly, they're politically costly. We need to elect leaders who are willing to stick their necks out for effective solutions and not welch on decisions that we've made and promises we've made to our residents when those political costs become evident.
As long as I've been paying attention, we've been estimating that projects are going to cost one thing, and then when we actually go to implement them, they're like 3X, every time. So it seems a little disingenuous that we keep repeating the same thing with the voters, where we're telling them they're going to get one thing, and then we deliver a completely reduced menu to them. I've had some experience with even simple things. Like, I don't know whether Estat has to literally bid these and stick to it, or what we're going to do, but I've had situations when I was working on traffic calming for neighborhoods where they had no idea what things cost.
The Move Seattle levy has underperformed and overpromised, and it's just kind of a thing that I don't see an easy way out of. What we can do in the future is make sure that levies are structured so that we have transit improvements happen with the money first. After that, bicycle improvements. After that, maybe some roadway improvements. Like, right now, what happens is everything gets cut, and it's not really an expression of our values.
I'm a firm believer that—the way we start addressing climate change here, being the number-one issue worldwide, is through public transportation, development, and housing. We're going to have to keep a promise on this one, and we're going to have to get creative as far as where we're going to get this money. If we don't pay it now, we're going to pay it 30 years from now, just like we did with public transportation. We're doing a lot of talking, and we need to put this money up front and resolve these issues now. The bill is just going to get bigger.
Yeah, this is Jay Fadde. You know, two words that are kind of boring, but they're very important, is fiscal responsibility. I don't know where that money went, but obviously, we need to find it. And we just got done talking about climate change and how we need more buses and more rapid-ride. And so absolutely, this is a high priority, and we need to deal with it. And we need to be very, very judicious and realistic when we're forecasting things around funding for levies and also just the city finances overall.
Ed Pottarst. It's unfortunate that the Move Seattle levy had been reset—not just with regard to rapid-ride lines, but also with regard to building out the Bicycle Trail Network. And those are really unfortunate. And I think partly is a result of planning that was not well-performed when the levy was put together. At the same time, the problem didn't go away. We want more transit options sooner than later.
I'm Heidi Wills. It's due to public transit that I got involved in public service to begin with. At the University of Washington, I was student body president, and I helped get a U-Pass program there, which was very controversial, believe it or not. Now, it's an of-course, being modeled all over the country. But I ran for City Council because Charlie Chong said some disparaging things about buses, and that's what fired me up. And on the council, I think we need an advocate who will provide adequate oversight, advocacy, and help—sorry, thanks.
This is Dan Strauss. What we can do is—we don't need to wait for the coaches that are associated with Bus Rapid—Rapid Ride here to be built for us to use everyday coaches on these routes. We understand that Rapid Ride attempts to be Bus Rapid Transit. It doesn't perform, because we don't have dedicated lanes for the Rapid Ride to truly be Bus Rapid Transit. We can do all-door boarding without having to wait for all of these machines to be—the card readers to be put in. We can get going with the resources that we have today.
Yes, we need more accountability and more transparency when it comes to city spending, absolutely. But I think the question was, how would we fund the gap when it comes to Move Seattle? And the answer is a transportation-impact-development fee that we would assess to large developers to raise more revenue—to raise new revenue—to invest in our mass transit and our public transportation systems.
I already answered this.
Okay, Joey, you're first. What do you think is the most important strategy—a specific, actual strategy or policy—Seattle can pursue to make the city affordable to live in and prevent displacement, especially communities of color?
The short answer is density. We have a housing shortage. We have a housing shortage that's existed for nearly 20 years at a minimum. We need to be doing what we can to increase density in our city. This is vital, not only for those disparities you spoke about in the question, but in addition to achieving zero carbon emissions and those other goals that are so vital to our city.
One of the things that I'm talking about would help is—I'm very much into owner-occupied communities, because they really strengthen our neighborhoods, and we can bring more people into them, like I did. I suggest that we make zero-interest loans available to owner occupants to be able to tuck a basement apartment or carriage house above the garage, or a little rental suite in, so that people can move into our neighborhoods, and we can keep the owners that are there, including the older people that are getting taxed right out of their houses.
I think that one of the things that—we—I agree, we need density. One of the other things I would very much like to see us do is— We have a housing shortage. We have a housing shortage that's existed for nearly 20 years at a minimum. We need to be doing what we can to increase density with our, in our city. This is vital, not only for those disparities you spoke about in the question, but in addition to achieving zero carbon emissions and those other goals that are so vital to our city.
One of the things that I'm talking about would help is, I'm very much into owner-occupied communities because they really strengthen our neighborhoods, and we can bring more people into them like I did. I suggest that we make zero-interest loans available to owner-occupants to be able to tuck a basement apartment or carriage house above the garage, or a little rental suite in, so that people can move into our neighborhoods, and we can keep the owners that are there, including the older, the older people that are getting taxed right out of their houses.
I think that one of the things that we, I agree, we need density. One of the other things I would very much like to see us do as a specific policy is expand our current concurrency program, where right now, we just look at the availability of transportation and transit, to also look at the availability of housing when we build retail, or we build office spaces that create a need for housing. If there isn't housing available, we should probably start, stop driving the need.
Sergio Garcia. I think the question here is, do we just want people of color in Seattle? Or are we okay with them living, live with them, living in our neighborhoods? I want to live in Seattle, and I want to live in the nice neighborhoods that most of us in here live. So it's very important to do, get creative. Development's important, meets the demand, supply meets the demand, and it's also getting creative with ADUs, doing mother-in-laws. So it gives people like me the opportunity to live amongst everyone in here.
Hey, it's Jay Favi. Increase density, increase supply, and continue to be creative in ways that we can, in our financing approaches, particularly for communities of color and in groups and populations who have traditionally been underserved and marginalized.
I think that one specific strategy that can be employed by the city is to expand the program of community housing trust fund, the community, I'm sorry, the community homestead program. And this is where, a program whereby the city buys the land, and people build up equity through ownership of the building, the house, where the modern family units are in, rather than the land, so that lowers the cost overall.
Heidi Wills. You know, right now, we're allowing for property tax exemptions for new buildings for only 12 years, and that's for 20% to 25% of those units. 12 years goes by really fast, and I think that we need to allow for extension for that, and also expand that for existing buildings, working to increase the supply of more affordable housing.
This is Dan Strauss. Expanding and streamlining the ability for detached accessory dwelling units and attached accessory dwelling units to be used to keep people in their homes and to provide additional property tax relief for larger sections of our population that are either on fixed incomes or are not making market 100% arrearing median income. We need to be able to keep people in their homes that they own.
We do need greater density. We need density that looks like low-income housing, that looks like that important missing middle in housing, places where nurses and teachers can live. We also have an opportunity to expand zoning for duplexes and triplexes to bring in that lower income and moderate income of rental units, and then making it easier for people to build things like backyard cottages and mother-in-law units. We could do things like put those plans available, available online so that homeowners can download a plan.
This is John Peoples, and to reduce cost of housing, we need to increase the density in our urban villages and bring that about by reducing code, regulations, rules, and permitting to reduce the cost of building low-cost housing.
All right, Kate, you're first for this question. According to ESTOT, 45,000 city blocks are missing sidewalks, but the city only has the money to build 25 blocks per year. That means it would take around 1,800 years to complete the city's entire sidewalk network. What are you going to do about this?
Yeah, Kate Martin speaking here. I actually did a study in 2008 and 2009 with a $100,000 grant from Department of Neighborhoods, and I actually documented how we can finish the sidewalk network. We came up with four financing strategies that would all be successful. We worked with block studies, and we talked to neighbors who were ready to organize to get their sidewalks. So it was kind of based on organizing blocks and having three or four financing options. This is doable, we can do this, and we need to do it now.
I think that getting sidewalks all over the area is going to require a certain amount of creativity. The first obvious option is to go in and add sidewalks when you restripe, but that's not going to be an option for most of these places. What I would like to see is us figure out how to make sidewalk building something that a community can do together reasonably, because a lot of the cost of that sidewalk is actually, actually labor, and it's something that communities care very deeply about, given toolkits they put them in.
Sergio Garcia talking. I think that we also, I mean, we need to get creative here. Sidewalks is not the only issue that's going to take us 18,000 years to resolve at this point. There's a few issues on the table that are probably going to take us a little bit longer. You know, there's grants out there, we need to work with the neighborhoods, we need to get creative and find that money. That money is there. Like I said earlier, I think, you know, it's a hard sell right now to ask people who are barely hanging on to their residence for more money. I've met knocking on doors and through work, I've met a handful of people.
I don't know if it was 18,000 or 1,800, but wow, that's, either way, that's absurd. When you think about the core structure, the core functions of a municipal government, it's to provide for infrastructure and things like that. To hear that that is a projected cost is beyond absurd. Being someone who has not yet worked inside city government, I would look for answers, and I would call people like my friend Kate Martin. Sounds like she's got some of the answers already.
I would do two things. First, I would propose a levy to fund sidewalk construction. Again, that'd be a heavy lift, and it's not going to solve the problem overnight, but it would certainly increase the level of funding available for a sidewalk construction. The other thing I would do is expand the funding for cost-effective pathways in lieu of concrete sidewalks. Concrete sidewalks are very expensive, not just because of concrete, but because of drainage.
This is a really important issue, not just to able-bodied pedestrians, but to all of us, folks who are in wheelchairs, to seniors, to children, to people who are vision impaired. And it is a basic service of city government. And I was able to dedicate more funds to sidewalks when I was on the city council and get the moniker "sidewalk-wills" by building voting blocks. I locked arms with Nick Locata, and together, we dedicated more funds out of the general fund to sidewalks.
Hi, this is Dan Strauss. I went to Nathan Hale at a time where there was no anything around the school. We walked around in gravel. Today, when you walk around there, there's asphalt and there's paint, and while paint doesn't keep you separated from people who are driving, it does present a people a very clear path of where they should and should not be. We know that, as Ed was saying, drainage is the most expensive aspect of creating sidewalks, and so when new development is occurring on property, we need to require that those sidewalks are built.
The truth is that there's not enough money to do everything that we want to do in Seattle, and very few new funding sources have been identified by this panel tonight. So we do want to fight for those additional resources to make this happen, but in the meantime, we have to look at what sidewalk development projects are going to have the highest impact to get us towards our transportation equity goals, to get us toward our climate change goals, and then looking at building in neighborhoods that have historically been underserved.
This is John Peoples, and I would have a combination of creative financing to reduce the cost of all those sidewalks and community buildings, and volunteer labor is a great idea, and at the very least, a curb to separate pedestrians from vehicles and bikes, and also prioritize, leave the places where people don't want sidewalks to the very end.
Hi, Joey Massa again. I think one thing that I haven't heard so far yet is our lack of skilled labor. It's a, it's a national issue, and I think it's a local issue as well. We talk a lot about funding folks to go to community colleges, to colleges. I grew up in a union family. I know that part of the reason why these costs are so high is a lack of family wage jobs, a lack of individuals who are capable and willing to, to work on these types of projects and, and address the needs that we have. So do we need more funding? Absolutely, and those are challenges we have to overcome, but our labor pool also needs to grow.
I'm going to move on to yes or no questions now, so get those signs ready, and then we will get to your questions. So if you have them, please write them down and give them to us. First lightning round question, and keep your card up because I'm going to read off the responses so that this is accessible to everyone. First, do you support completing the Burke-Gilman missing link along the preferred alignment on Schill-Scholl? Jay, you gonna, okay. So Jay, okay, we don't have time for that, but Jay is qualifying, Heidi is qualifying, and, oh, you, yeah. Sergio, no. Melissa, yes. Kate, no. Joey, yes. John, no. Terry, yes. Dan, no. Dan qualified, no. Heidi qualified something. Ed, yes. Do you support the proposed backyard cottage legislation? I'm seeing all yeses except for Kate and John. Is that right? All right. Do you support funding the Center City Connector Streetcar? Jay, yes. Sergio, yes. Melissa, yes. Kate, no. Joey, no. John, no. Sorry, Terry, yes. Dan, yes. Heidi, yes. Ed, yes. Do you support implementing congestion pricing in downtown Seattle? Jay, yes. Sergio, no. Melissa, no. Kate, no. Joey, no. John, no. Terry, no. Dan in the middle somewhere. Heidi, yes. Ed, yes. Would you support allowing triplexes and quadruplexes in current single-family zones? Sergio, yes. Melissa, yes. Kate, no. Joey, yes. John, yes. Terry, yes. Dan, yes. Heidi, yes. Ed, yes. Do you support electric scooter sharing in Seattle? Kate, do you have? No, no position. Okay. Jay, yes. Sergio, no. Melissa, yes. Joey, no. John, yes. Terry, yes. Dan, yes. Heidi, yes. Ed, yes. Do you support impact fees on new developments to fund transportation improvements? Looks like all yeses except for Kate.
Are you specifically saying impact specifically for transportation?
Yes, specifically for transportation improvements.
I can agree with that.
Okay, so everyone, yes, except for Kate? All right. Do you support the proposed affordable housing development at Fort Lawton? Jay, yes. Sergio, no. Melissa, yes. Kate, no position. Sorry, Joey, yes. John, no. Terry, yes. Dan, yes. Heidi, yes. Ed, yes. Should Seattle grant tenants a right to counsel when they're facing eviction? This is a right to a lawyer like you get in other cases. Everybody says yes? No, except for John says no. And finally, do you support a per-ride fee on Uber and Lyft trips in downtown Seattle? Jay, yes. Sergio, yes. Melissa, yes. Kate, no. Joey, no. John, no. Terry, yes. Dan, yes. Heidi, yes. Ed, yes. Okay, we did it. Your questions? All right, so this person wrote, will you advocate for light rail to Ballard? But that's coming already. So the next part of the question, bridge or tunnel? So I think you all can make this quick. Bridge or tunnel?
How about yes is bridge?
Okay, sure. Yes is tunnel. So that means you're going to find the money necessary to pay for the tunnel if it's not. All right. Jay, yes. Sergio, yes. Melissa, no. Oh, sorry, tunnel, okay. Jay, tunnel. Sergio, tunnel. Melissa, elevated, bridge. Kate, tunnel. Joey, elevated. John, tunnel. Terry, tunnel. Dan, tunnel. Heidi, tunnel. Ed, tunnel. Would you support efforts in Olympia to legalize rent control? Let's do this as a question, because the person also asks, if not, what policy tool would you implement instead of rent control? Although, we've, never mind, we've already talked about what you would do. So yes or no rent control in Olympia? Would you support lobbying for rent control? Jay, no. Sergio, no. Melissa, yes. Kate, no. Joey, no. John, no. Terry, yes. Dan, no. Heidi, no. Often, community input means the voices of homeowners. What will you do to ensure that the city, that the city's renters have a voice in public policy, given that they might have a harder time making it to office hours or taking time off work for council forums, et cetera? We'll start. Who has the microphone? All right, Melissa.
Melissa Hall. First of all, I am a renter. Second of all, this is why, one of the wonders of the information age is that we don't actually have to drag people physically to office hours or meetings. We can do this stuff online. We can have remote meetings, and we can take email comment, which is a really useful tool.
This is Sergio Garcia, and I think there's something about being in person and being heard, and not just getting a yes or no through an email or through a forum. Office hours, and I am a renter, I think that we definitely need another renter on council. Right now, there's only one, and I think they are in the process of buying a house. So if we want to kind of be inclusive to renters or people of color, then you're in luck.
Yeah, what is it, just over half of the folks in Seattle are renters. We absolutely need to have the voices of renters heard, without question. And I agree with Melissa, there's creative ways we can do it, whether it's flexing hours, whether it's virtual meetings, whether it's, there's lots of ways we can do it, but we absolutely have to do it.
I agree with Melissa that online forum can be a great way of access for renters. I also think that it's really important that those of us who are homeowners understand that the objective here is to build inclusive whole communities throughout Seattle, which means homeowners, renters, people of all, all kinds, and it's really important that we take that perspective when thinking about affordable housing legislation and so forth.
Yes, Heidi Wills. If I get elected, I'd love to have an office in the district, in the Ballard Library, to make it easier for people to interface with their representative. I would think we need more housing of all shapes and sizes for people of all income levels throughout our city, and I think we need to bring back neighborhood planning and have it bottom-up rather than top-down. When I was on the council, we had a very robust neighborhood planning effort. I've seen firsthand that it works.
This is Dan Strauss. I'm also a renter, and so we, I'm a renter. I was the first candidate to say that I would open a district. candidate to say that I would open a district office, and I would also make the office hours available throughout the district. Even though I love Ballard so much, I know Ballard's not the only part of the district. I would also make sure that we had hearings and office hours outside of the typical nine-to-five schedule.
I am also a renter. But I think the conversation goes beyond renters and homeowners, and we... I'm thinking about how do I reach out to communities that have folks who are working two jobs or have folks who can't easily make it downtown? So where can I meet the constituents of District 6 where they're at, whether that's at a library or at a transit station or at a farmer's market to set up, to make... to be available to hear the voices from the district? So renters, yes. Homeowners, yes. But there's so many more communities that we want to make sure we're hearing from.
John Peoples, I am a renter, and I do not feel excluded because I'm a renter. I would have city council and committee meetings in the morning, in the afternoon, and in the evening, so a wider variety of people can attend in person. I'd also have office hours in city hall and out here in the district. The main thing is better communication of the agenda so that people can make plans to leave work early or take a day off so that they can attend.
Joey Massa again. I own my boat but rent my mortgage, so I guess I'm a little column A, little column B. That being said, as many candidates have said, there are incredible information technology tools that allow us not only to gather information but to aggregate that information to allow others to put their input on that aggregated information. Further, you know, as everyone's saying, office hours, I don't think canvassing your district should end when your candidacy ends. I think we should be, as representatives, out here and visible to our communities.
I've gone to a lot of meetings over 20 years, and I don't remember anyone saying that renters couldn't come to the meetings. I would like to get some communication tools out there. I think it could be technology-oriented, but I think it also could be a District 6 advocate newspaper that I'm thinking of putting out when I'm elected so I can keep people informed about the important issues that are going on and maybe put a response card inside that they could answer some questions and just mail it back so that I could take the pulse of what's happening out in the district.
This is a bike lanes question, so if you would also like to address your feelings on the Burke-Gilman Missing Link, please feel free. What bike projects in your district will you work to complete, and what else will you do to make biking a more practical, safer, and more accessible option across Seattle?
So there is no other bike project in this district that anybody could argue that is more important than the one, the Missing Link. I think that right now it's... it would be... it wouldn't be in my position to give an opinion. I am still talking to both sides. I do have mixed feelings. What I could tell you that I do believe in completing the Missing Link. It is important. I think I'm able... I will be able to do that. It is also going through the judicial system right now, so I don't think that we should give an opinion on it. And as far as the bigger picture here, I think it's education to be a little bit more inclusive of people of color and other cultures.
Hey, this is Jay Fawley. The benefits of bicycling are enormous for a multitude of reasons. Climate change, your health. As a community health physician, as a family doctor, certainly, especially if you're wearing your helmet, absolutely we need to get more and more folks bicycling for a multitude of reasons. I support the Bike Master Plan. It's a great blueprint. If anyone's not aware, they should look it up. It's got really a nice roadmap laid out. We have to continue to get more and more people to experiencing times out of their cars so they can appreciate bicycling and safety. That was like the first time. You never had the whole thing for me. That was the
Ed Patajk, I strongly support completion of the Missing Link along the Burke-Gilman Trail. It's been really frustrating how so many years have gone by and yet Missing Link is still there. And I would like to see that end as soon as possible. I think the preferred alignment on Shilshul is the most direct and beneficial one for the community. And I hope that the community, the business community around, along the way, understand that this can be a benefit of them, a way of showing the community what the maritime community about.
Heidi Wills. I sponsored the resolution to complete the Burke-Gilman Trail along Shilshul. That was 16 years ago. We haven't gotten very far. I do believe that the safety features there can coexist safely with existing businesses, but the existing businesses do not believe so. And they have not felt like they've had an advocate on the council. And if they don't have an advocate from District 6, who do they have? So I think we need to bring them with us in this discussion. Other ideas, thinking outside the box, are like the High Line in New York City. It maybe doesn't have to be a either-or. It can be a win-win with an elevated.
This is Dan Strauss. I started going to Burke-Gilman Trail meetings when I was eight. I have watched politician after politician fall on their sword and not get this done. We've got about a mile left to complete, and I think that we do need to come back together as a community. I do... I didn't go to college right away after high school. I went to AmeriCorps, and one of my options was jumping on a fishing boat or a family wage job on the docks. And we need to be able to preserve those jobs in our community, and we need bicycle infrastructure because I got hit by a driver.
This issue's really close to me. I started my career on the maritime... in the maritime industry on the Ship Canal. And I understand the concerns that come from that industry that's so deeply under threat from so many other parts of their business as well. But it's time to complete the Burke-Gilman Link. It's time to complete the Missing Link. It's time to invest in getting the Bike Master Plan done. And as I go door-to-door, the project I hear the most about in the district is the Eighth Avenue Bike Lane. People are really interested in getting upgrades to that Eighth Avenue Bike Lane as ridership picks up on that route as well.
John Peoples, I strongly support the completion of the Burke-Gilman Trail. Mixed feelings, but that ship has sailed. Construction is beginning soon. I want to be an advocate, however, for those businesses that stand to be adversely affected by the current Shilshul route elsewhere in the district. At the very least, the green paint lets other users of the road know that bikes may be there.
So to kind of expand on my earlier statement, I live on the very end of the Missing Link. My wife and I live in a marina just behind Stone Gardens. So every day, I almost... I go to my gym, which is on the other end, next to Trader Joe's, which I also get my groceries there. And so on one hand, you have, if you build it, they will come. On the other hand, we have a problem that already exists. I see bicyclists making poor choices. I see cars making dangerous choices every day on that route. And the reality is, it's only a matter of time until a dangerous accident happens because we haven't put infrastructure in place.
As a planner, I'm kind of appalled by that route along Shilshul. The Alaskan fishing fleet feeds America, and there's no reason to threaten those businesses. We have very important maritime industrial land that we should not kill by a thousand cuts. The route, 17th is already a greenway. We could pick up 17th and then move from there on to Leary Avenue, which is a tremendously wide street that would be very safe, both of those, 17th and Leary Avenue, very safe. And I recommend that because it would not adversely affect
I support any route that gets the Burke-Gilman connected. But my understanding of the question was, it was, what would we do to support bicycle infrastructure? Specifically, what I would like to see us do as a city is expand the tax credits and loan programs that we have for electric cars to electric bicycles, because I think that's a real winning opportunity for Seattle bicyclics.
Much of Seattle's affordable housing is in buildings... are you... did you get... you answered that. Okay. Much of Seattle's affordable housing is in buildings that are more at risk of collapse in a major earthquake. How should Seattle preserve its existing affordable housing while encouraging or mandating seismic retrofits that can be expensive?
Whose turn is it?
You started last time, so Jay.
Of course. I always get to start on the really easy questions. Not... I'm really sorry we had microphone confusion. Can you just like get to the nub of it again? What was the question?
So a lot of affordable housing buildings may be at risk and of collapse in a major earthquake. How should Seattle preserve affordable housing while encouraging or mandating seismic retrofits?
That's a problem. Obviously, particularly if it's affordable housing, we're going to be talking about underserved communities, very likely communities of color, people that have been marginalized that... I don't know. They answered that question. That's a very good question. That's something... it's not something that we can tolerate. We need to do something about that, whether it's... yeah, I don't know. Great question. Love to hear your input.
Just let's just go back this way to make it easier.
My turn.
I thought I was going to have more time to think about this. So it's a difficult question, right? But the reality is that we need to start paying attention to that. We're focused on so many issues in the city, and we forgot about what happens if we get hit by an earthquake, right? We don't even have a plan as first responders. That's why we need to encourage more first responders and nurses and people who could aid in such a situation and meet with the experts on what we could do to retrofit and moving forward, what it is that we need to do to start building and planning ahead for when that day comes. It's not if, it's when.
Unreinforced masonry is dangerous. Unfortunately, like you said, it takes up a lot of our affordable housing. We can't deprive people of homes when we don't have any other place for them to live. However, we need to start doing visible disclosures for people who live in unreinforced housing, unreinforced masonry housing, so they're at least aware of the danger that they're taking. It's not easy to find that information. And I would like us to start just massively building more housing. The problem with these buildings is that many of them are also historic, so it's not like they're going to be retrofitted
Yeah, there's quite a variety of costs associated with retrofitting buildings, but my idea would be to provide zero-interest loans to help people afford to... on wood flooring buildings to do the tie-downs to the foundation, which is actually a pretty simple process. For masonry buildings, it gets more expensive. I think zero-interest loans for that and for fire suppression systems in those affordable buildings would make a lot of sense and improve safety quite a bit.
Boy, this question, just like Black Swan events, they hit you when you're not expecting. So as folks have said, increasing density is vital, creating more housing stock so that we can create the opportunities for folks to move out of and restore those unprotected buildings, effective code legislation that looks to the future, more than, you know, just five years ahead, 10, 20 years ahead. And then, again, communication with constituents, communication with residents who are living in those dicey kinds of locations, letting them know the risks that they're currently facing.
John Peoples here. While we're building more low-cost housing, the retrofits indeed are expensive, and the plan would be to go one building at a time. Temporary housing for the current residents, a citywide call to housing for those residents who can then move back into their retrofitted building when the project is complete.
Tax credits, loan assistance, and technical assistance and support are how we can begin to do this work in the buildings that need it. It also proposes a unique opportunity while we're already working with building owners to encourage them to look at their energy use, energy consumption of those buildings, and see how we can put in some incentives to help lower the carbon footprint from those buildings as well.
Hi, this is Dan. Property or loans to reinforce unreinforced masonry are oftentimes not taken by property owners because when they go to sell the building, they're still stuck with the loan. So being able to tie those to the actual building is something that we can do. Tax credits and technical assistance is also things that we can do. And we have these tools now.
Yeah, there... Heidi Wills, there is examples in place of how we do that to encourage conservation measures in existing affordable housing units. It's ratepayers who help pay for that through our public utility, Seattle City Light. If we want to do that with tax incentives and we decide as a community that that's a public benefit, I think, though, that right now we're finding that there's a huge need for more housing. And if we had additional dollars, they'd go there.
Ed Patajk. Seattle is an earthquake-prone city, and the safety of all people living in Seattle is paramount. I think we can come up with a program that would slowly... that would steadily retrofit the unreinforced masonry buildings over a period of time, and at the same time, recognize that we have more affordable housing stock than we know. Other cities like Portland and Sacramento have been taking advantage of inexpensive hotels for temporary relocation.
Okay, we are running out of time. We're going to start with you for this final bit. It's just closing statements. You get one minute each. Please remember, everyone is trying to distinguish among you all, so if you think there's something that really makes you stand out, please help the voters by telling us what that is. So one minute closing statements, and then Matthew from the Mass Coalition will come up and close us out. Ed, you're first.
Okay, yeah. Ed Patajk. A bit about me. I was born with a hearing loss, and I used cochlear implants and read lips to best understand people. I'm a planner with Seattle Park and Recreation. I have 30 years of the public service experience with the city of Seattle. Before Park and Recreation, I worked with the Department of Neighborhood. I had the Neighborhood Court, LIA-DAN, and I had a grant funder to community groups all throughout Seattle. Prior to that, I worked for Seattle City Light as an environmental and natural resources protection specialist. I'm running for city council because I want to see the city take strong action on urgent issues of climate change, affordable housing, homelessness, and social justice, including increased police accountability. And I look forward to working with the city, other city council members, other levels of government, the county, the state, to come up with creative solutions. And I look forward to seeing you on the campaign trail. Thank you.
I'm Heidi Wills, and I'm the only candidate who's had this job before. It's been 20 years, but I think the fact that I've been a policymaker helps with so much turnover coming to the city with four new people, automatically maybe three more. And these are major, challenging issues that we have before us. And these are issues that I've been in the trenches working on for three decades. I come as a policymaker, as a mom raising children in this community, two kids in middle school, having lived in the district for over 16 years. I'm a nonprofit director specialized in youth development. I'm an environmental champion, having worked on issues related to sustainability for most of my life. And I'm a collaborative leader who cares about listening and bringing your voices to city hall on the issues that affect you. If I have an opportunity to serve you again, I've had a lot of life experience since I've been on the city council, and I think I'll be a better policymaker.
My name is Dan Strauss, and I have the knowledge and relationships to make the ideas that you've heard tonight into reality. I have almost a decade of legislative experience in four different legislative bodies, and I currently work for the city council. And I can take the relationships that I have today, the current relationships, and make realities for you tomorrow. I've already, just this year, coordinated work groups with the state, county, city, port, sound transit, and community to fund transportation projects, develop green building codes, improve our parks. And I am so committed to creating a protected bike lane and protected bicycle master plan throughout the city, not just our district. I'm born, raised, rooted in Ballard. I'm really excited to earn your support and the opportunity to serve you.
Well, thank you all for being here tonight. The stakes in this election... I'm sorry, Terry Rice. The stakes in this election couldn't be higher. It's truly a choice between continuing to respond to the crisis of today or stepping back and doing the hard work to invest in our future for Seattle 10 years, 20 years, 30 years from now. So that's a vision where you can walk to a grocery store or you're a block away from a metro transit stop or a light rail station, where our communities have a diversity of age, of race, of income, and of occupation, where there's access to green spaces like parks, where the city... where you feel safe and the city is well taken care of. That's the vision that we can fight for. And almost, I mean, most importantly, where we're championing climate change policy and taking a wholesale adoption of the 170-point plan that Portland has put in use, and we're taking that fight to Seattle to make sure that we are truly climate leaders. to make sure that we are truly climate leaders.
John Peoples. And I'm running to represent you all on the city council to bring your voice back to the city council that's been missing lately. I bring an engineer's, system-wide-thinking perspective to upstream contributors to today's problems and thoughtfulness of the downstream consequences. Seattle has a very bright, prosperous, dignified future ahead of her. And we're going to all participate. And we're going to do so without vilifying each other. There's a role to be played by everyone. And I'm looking forward to contributing to that. Vote for John Peoples. And 100% voter turnout and registration rate for August primary. Let's knock out the other council districts in voting turnout.
Again, my name is Joey Massa. And I'm running for city council as an independent progressive. One of the top questions I get when I'm out at canvassing in the district is what does progressive mean to you? And to me, the core belief of progressivism is that government should function as a living body, changing and adapting to the needs of its society. This is a thread that has been lost not only in our national politics, but in our local politics. This philosophy throughout our history has been used to incredible effect, from leaders like Lincoln and Theodore Roosevelt to Woodrow Wilson or FDR. Effective progressives look at challenges straight on and ask not what is, but what can be? What can that future look like? Now, more than ever, we need leaders who are willing to lean into costly solutions, take political risks, and put the city before any other agenda. And that is what my candidacy is rooted in. I've served our state and nation as a veteran. I know how costly some of that service can be. And I'm willing to be vulnerable in those ways.
Yes, I'm Kate Martin speaking. I've been a community member here in Finney Ridge, Greenwood, for 33 years. I raised my children here. I'm a professional planner and designer. And I've made a career out of solving problems. And this job will be no different. All of our problems are fixable. All of our affordable housing problems are fixable. I have an outline of how we're going to do it. As I mentioned earlier, ownership is the ultimate rent control. So my goal is to get us from 42% homeownership to 75% homeownership. I just want to make a note that I am walking the talk of density. I'm a yes-in-my-backyard person. But I do not want us to make the same mistake that we just made where we cause a feeding frenzy of investors and speculators in our neighborhoods. No species uses density to measure quality habitat. And we should be no different than salmon or orcas in creating the kind of quality habitat that we actually need for humans. Humans are suffering. We can fix that. Thank you for your time, Kate Martin.
Hello, my name is Melissa Hall. My wife and I and our two-year-old live in a quadruplex that was developed